If we please rise. Place the flag if you have one.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, foundation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Pillar, would you? Hi Jared. We just did a, we just did a, we just did a pledge, so welcome to the meeting. Everybody, all the commissioners are either in the room or on the phone. Oh, we got someone else.
Hello. Mike Quinn.
Hi Mike. Ted, was that you Ted on the phone?
Yes Ted.
I'm sorry Ted, I didn't recognize you right away.
What's up? Jared Kobande.
And Jared Kobande just called in too. Okay. No, that's okay, for all of you that are, I just want to run down who's in, in attendance, so in the, in the room right now with us is Nancy Wolf, Monte Earhart, Casey Stern, Dave Russo, and myself. And on the phone is Dan Pillar, Jason Hack, Pat Donovan, Ted Bilidou, and Jared Kobande. Did I miss anybody? And Buster Langowski, that's twice. And then Mike Quinn is also on the, on the phone. Alright, at this time, Dan, Mr. Pillar, would you please do a prayer for us?
Yes, everyone would bother that please. Dear Heavenly Father, we pray that you watch over the activities of tonight's meeting, that we can address the needs of our citizens, and that we can do it in an upright manner. Your Lord, we just thank you for, for hopefully the, the ending of the epidemic that we're having here, that we can see the light at the end of the tunnel, and we just pray that you would watch over all of our citizens and all the people in this country and in this world. Your name is great, amen.
Thank you. Okay, reading approval of minutes from the April 6th meeting, please.
Motion to approve and suspend the reading.
And we have motion by Wolf. Second. And second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor of approving the minutes from April 6th, say aye.
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 Okay, minutes are approved. Approval of the agenda, any changes or additions to the agenda? Need to approve.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
We have motion by Stern, second by Pillar.
Sure.
Okay, discussion. All in favor of the agenda, say aye.
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 Okay. Agenda is approved. In 5A, engineers report. Jared, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, alright. Since I'm on the phone here, I'm gonna try and skim through this, you guys should have my, copy of my report from last week. I'm gonna, like I said, just skim this, because I don't have much. I heard Mr. Bilidou's name on the, on the phone, so I tried to call him on Friday, I believe, touch base. We're gonna be closing out the street project, hopefully here in a month or so. You kind of remember, we took care of a bunch of the, the heating areas that didn't come in last fall. I don't think we've had enough time for that really to get work in and get growing, so. I don't have anything real, or, I mean, we, we have a bunch list of things that we've been monitoring. We've been looking at some streets, sidewalk areas, but it's just kind of a partial drive-through today, and I didn't see anything big, anything really at all, I guess, to report. Again, though, you're monitoring things. John, I'm gonna have him drive through on his way home on Wednesday, on a job on Allen. So I'll have him kind of just go through town, if you guys have anything, like I told you this last meeting, just let me know, figure out if there is a warranty-related item, or something that needs to get addressed, or not get addressed, or want addressed, or not addressed, but anyway, that's really all I have on the street project, no bills, nothing like that, still kind of just in a holding pattern there. Ted, did you want to say anything regarding that, or were you just kind of listening yet?
Just kind of listen and see what we got.
Okay, alright, that's all I really have right now. That's all, that's all I was gonna tell you on Friday, when I try to get ahold of you. As far as, next thing on my list is kind of Williams Building Company.
Jared, Jared, Casey Stern here. Sorry about this, but anyway, on the, I guess paved, I guess, bike path, you know, I guess, north of the road. I don't know if you guys have been on that, I guess lately or not, but it's kind of starting to fall apart in a couple of spots. I don't know if that's a warranty thing or not.
Can you tell, I'm driving right now, can you kind of tell Dave where that's at, and I can take a look at it on Wednesday?
I got some, I guess, got some, I guess, I guess, pictures of it too, I guess, I guess, like Monte, too, so.
Okay. I need them from you, and then we'll, I'll take a look.
Okay, alright. Okay, sounds good, thank you.
All, all that stuff, you guys, you stuff, let me know. I'm not saying it's a blanket, you know, do everything we want, everything, but we'll definitely take a look, and take determination with how we gotta get, or how we gotta get it addressed.
Okay.
Anyway, moving on, Williams Building Company, that's your Expedition Estates project. Sounds like, your last meeting, you guys asked me to get ahold of them, so I emailed them that night, kind of proud of them two days ago. Monte, it sounds like has correspondence with them too, coming out trying to get it figured out, who's, of whose responsibility it is between those, those contractors, and we'll just keep monitoring things, the moment it's, it's still pretty early, there's no paving companies up and running, but I think we got a good plan of communicating with them, and they know what the expectations are right now. The idea is that they were gonna provide a plan, and see how they're gonna fix it, so we, we know what the, the plan is. Really then, next thing is State Water Commission related stuff for your water storage tank. We, the, the process is, is to do some soil borings, and figure out the, the site that we, that we want, we kind of picked out a handful of different spots, and it sounds like the, the one we were looking at two weeks ago probably isn't, isn't gonna work, landowner didn't, didn't want to do that one, so picked out kind of another spot here with you guys, and hopefully try and get the okay to do soil borings on, on that person's property. Assuming we can kind of reach a, a deal with them in the next few days. Soil boarding is still 10 days, two weeks out, but anyway, it's kind of just an update. There's lots of places that'll work, but we're trying to find a spot that's relatively close, and is high enough to achieve all the water pressure, you know, that we want in town for everybody, so. We're just, we're picking on close, easy sites right now, trying to get the landowner to agree to sell us a part, a parcel, and I, it sounds like we got, we're hopefully gonna have good luck with this spot, so just kind of an update there. Jerry has a map too, with Keith, if he wants to see what we're looking at right now. Next thing I have on my list, no approvals there, just kind of an update. Next thing I have on my list is just the, we talked about the alley behind West River Telephone, and I think we were asking them to look at it, provide a scope and a D, we kind of told them how it's gotta get fixed, what the city would, would want done back there, or how, how we get it fixed. And they were gonna ask their contractor for a price to then do that, to install, install storm sewer pipe and fix the grave. Monte's got some information from Capital City Construction and KLG to do that stuff.
Yeah, we didn't receive anything in writing as yet from KLG or Capital City Construction. I did have a conversation with Troy Schilling today, and their cost were well over 100,000 to install that storm sewer, and do the paving and stuff, so they're going back more toward their original plan of running that, running their drainage off their building, north of the building into the street, into the storm sewer. So we'll have to look at other alternatives as far as repairing that alley, and then determining the cost to be shared among the property owners in the city.
Anything else, Jared?
Not really, other than the, your Indy Streets multi-revitalization efforts to enhance traffic systems application is still pending. I got a call from Lena Gottschman from the DOT on Friday, and she said that they were working on the scoring right now, they normally get together to do it, but they sent everything out to people, and she was just waiting for all the scoring and ranking stuff to come back from the different people that were doing that, and I, I would guess that you'll hear something back from them soon, whether they'll, they'll fund something or not. If you recall, that's a 90% grant to do work to the Highway 200 corridor in downtown, and we'd asked for them to build a bike trail, some lighting, and then an underpass, pedestrian walkway underneath Highway 200. So I, just since I, I guess the next week or two, we will hopefully know something, and if that does go forward, that will be a DOT project, they would just work with you and coordinate with you on what they're doing, and, and we'll help guide the process, we'll help put the application together, but we don't really have much control over that one.
Okay.
My report and otherwise, I'm, I need to take one phone call, and I'll run and call back in here in about five minutes.
That's fine, thank you. Anybody have any questions? Okay. Ted, did you need, want to respond, or have any other comments on anything Jared said?
Uh, no, I don't have any comments on it.
Alright.
I just like know where we're at.
Absolutely, thank you for calling in.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 6A, nuisance ordinance enforcement. Mr. Quinn did call in to get on the agenda and had some questions. We have those questions here, Nancy Wolf will address those, and we'll turn it over to Nancy.
Okay, I guess I did talk to Jim Wolf today about some of these questions, and he has sent out letters to a number of people, a lot of them are taking care of part of the problem, or all of the problems, some of them are registering and licensing their vehicles, some have been towed. They are, they are taking action as, as per the letter, I know that if you don't have a copy of the letter that gets sent out, Monte does have copies for anyone who wants to look at it. They do send a copy of the ordinance with the copy of the letter to everyone that they're sending them out to, so they know what needs to be done. And right now, those responsible are, of course, the police department and the city commission, who are, are taking the lead on, on trying to get these places cleaned up. I'm not sure what other questions that you had, Mike?
Well, I just wondered, the people were given 30 days, according to what I understand this, and 30 days has elapsed, and they, what is the plan for the people who don't comply?
So far, they all have been complying. One of them had, like I said-
I'm just, I'm looking at the day on the letter that was sent to the Rikes, and it said it was sent on March 15th, and today is April 20th, and there's a junk boat, and junk car still in their yard, there may be some other junk there, but they moved out of the junk vehicles they had, they've only moved one so far.
Well, I guess according to Jim, we cannot go into their yard to check those vehicles, and so if they are licensed, they're, we can't do anything. He can't go into their yard and, and check to see if they're licensed or registered.
Okay, well, you can see from the street that they have a junk boat, the wheels are off it. It's, it's dilapidated, it's pretty evident. I'm just wondering, it's, I believe the letter that you sent them said something about they would, there's something in the letter that they would be some given, issued a summons, when do you intend to issue the summons?
I would have to talk to Jim on that, he said they have been complying, they have towed a vehicle, and they have registered and licensed at least one vehicle. But like I said, he can't see in his yard.
Okay, that leaves one junk boat, and the one car that I don't believe has been licensed, but I, I just, so, if I understand you correctly, as far as their junk boat goes, they will be issued a summons, or how is that gonna work?
Yes, if they're not in compliance, then Jim will be taking care of that, yes.
Okay, so, okay, well, if, if the summons is issued in a timely fashion, I, do we really have any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you for taking care of it.
You bet.
Thank you, Mike.
We do.
Okay, moving down to 9A, down to reports. Water sewer.
I've got nothing to report at this time. Unless Dave, if you've got any updates on the garbage truck?
I talked to him this morning, and it's right now, the factory is closed down. It's set to be shipped, but I suppose as long as they're locked down, or whatever they can, can't get it out of there. So he was hoping to find more information out today, and give me a call tomorrow.
And the repair on our own truck from, that we talked about, and approved bundle for at our last meeting?
Yeah, that's done and running good.
Excellent, thank you. That's it, Jerry.
Okay, Nancy has a question for you.
Well, I have a question for Dave, actually, or for anyone. I've been asked, are we doing cleanup week?
Yeah, that's on the-
Oh, it is on-
Well, it's not on the agenda, but I put it in the notes, are we going to conduct the cleanup week, or are we making any-
God, I've had a lot of calls on that one, and a lot of people are already setting stuff out. So, I guess it's something, I, I know that Bismarck canceled theirs, Bismarck for Mandan.
Yeah, Dave and I had a conversation on this, and, and we knew that, that up in the Bismarck-Mandan area, what they have been doing is they, they canceled, but they've allowed citizens to, to take their stuff, the landfills at no charge to the citizens. And, and I guess just my input to Dave was, you know, we may have citizens that rely on the movement of that stuff they put out there on their, their curb, and they don't have a, maybe a personal means of getting that to the landfill. And I just threw out the proposal, possibly delaying it till a little bit later time.
What would be the reason for delaying?
Boulevard, right now. Excuse me?
What would be the reason for delaying?
Just the, coming in contact with people's personal business and stuff like that, a little bit different than, than just the regular garbage removal, where we hook the bins up to the truck and stuff like that, or, you know, grab them and dump them. I know occasionally they gotta grab bags, move bags and things like that, but there had been some concerns from, from our internal workers, so we certainly can throw it out there for, for discussion, and see, you know, what the rest of you guys have for input.
I guess, you know, one thing, Bismarck-Mandan, they own their own landfill. We can't allow people to go to our land, first of all, our landfill hours are not very conducive to people that work during the day. Secondly, we don't have the right, or we're not gonna let, tell people to go out there on their own, I would not be, that's, we'd be paying for more flat tires than we would people helping tipping fees. I, I guess, I guess myself, I want to see it happen. If we delay it a couple of weeks, I think, I think it still should happen in May, maybe at the end of May, we'll see how things go, but I think it's a, I think it's a good service that we, we provide, and, you know, we can be careful, we're wearing gloves, a lot of that stuff we pick up with the clam bucket and, and things like that, I know we still have to hand, hand pick up things, but I think, I'd like to see it happen, not sure what the date would be, but-
One of, one of the concerns that Dave and I had a little bit of discussion on is, as we all know, when the things make it out onto the curb, it's like a citywide garage sale, without any money being exchanged, and, and I don't know how we, I don't know if police is the right word, or we somehow think need to suggest that folks don't go grab other people's things and stuff like that, just to hopefully there again, order some of that social distancing via people's property. I don't know if that makes any sense. They say that this stuff can be on, on surfaces for, for a couple of days and stuff like that, and if people are carrying it out, and they happen to be infected in their house, and then somebody else finds that to be their treasure, and they stop by and grab it, take it home with them, that, that would be a little bit of a concern.
Hey Jerry, this is Jason.
Go ahead.
We're, we're up on, it's almost near the May anyway, so, I'm asking everybody, have these, is it a little bit too late to do the end of April, or not? And maybe mid-April, see what conditions this whole pandemic is, what direction it's heading, and make a-
We're all heading into April right now, Dave.
Excuse me, not April, May, excuse me. You want to do it the end of May, find out, I'm behind you on, so you want to do it the end of May? Right?
Who are you asking?
We shoot, we shoot for that, but the, the middle of May, we see where this pandemic is, what direction it's going, either positive or negative, and we make a determination to proceed or to postpone again the middle of May. I make that in the form of a motion.
Say that again, Jason. Jason, please say that again.
So I make a motion that we, we postpone it and, and schedule it for the end of May, but the middle of May, we make a determination whether this pandemic is continuing, or whether it's peaked and ending, and the middle of May, we either proceed forward, or we postpone it again. That way, we're not waiting till the, the last week of May, and still there in our feet.
So are you saying like, are, on May 18th, that's a Monday, that's not the first?
Uh-
The first Monday is, the third Monday is the 18th of May.
The next one would be September 11th.
So let's, let's see where it's at, yeah.
The 22nd and the 23rd.
Maybe 18th meeting. Okay?
I guess we could set it then.
I, I think that's a little wishy-washy, myself. People are looking for a date, they're not looking for a maybe, like I said, I've already seen stuff on the curb, because they're used to the first week in May.
Second week.
The second week, so-
I just said if, if we do it, postpone it till the end of May, that's it.
Yeah, but then you said to let's revisit the middle of May, so now you're saying maybe May 18th, maybe the end of May?
No, no, we, we, we as a commission-
Yes.
-as a commission, talk about it, and say, okay, if this isn't gonna go, then we're gonna move forward again.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Dan already seconded it.
And second by Dan.
I guess the other thing that I would like to see is that, is that, I mean, this would be all done by the next, like graduation, you know?
Yeah.
That we have, if there's gonna be a graduation, but I mean, that way then all this stuff isn't way outside.
It looks like we have giant-
Yeah.
Because we are trying to clean up our communities, so, I, you know, and if you listen to the, people who know, this is not ending, it's not gonna go away, it's gonna reduce, it's always gonna be there like influenza, so you're gonna take precautions no matter what. We just have to, I think, pick a day and say, this is, this is the week that we're gonna do it, and do it. Because I, now I have to go back to them and say, well, it's gonna be the end of May, but maybe a little bit earlier, or maybe later, but it might be the end of May, but maybe June, well, maybe, maybe middle of June, you know, so it's-
If we choose to have this done by graduation, it has to be done no later than the week of the 18th or 22nd.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we're discussion. Monte, read that.
What's your opinion on that one, Jerry?
Monte, can you read the motion again?
Just a motion to delay, suspend cleanup week, scheduled for the end of May, review again at the mid-month meeting.
Okay, roll call.
Hack.
Hi.
Keller.
No.
Stern.
No.
Wolf.
No.
Over an hour.
No, motion failed.
And, and I guess, I, I said no only because to make the decision on the 18th and do it on that same week, that, I, that is a big service to, to our citizens, because I, I hadn't looked at the calendar when we talked about the month, and that's Memorial Day week, the, the next week, and that would be close to graduation. So now we have to come up with a discussion here as to how we do want to move forward then with, with cleanup week.
You know, we could set it for the week of the 18th, if we, if things get out of hand, or way worse, we can always cancel it. We will have trash on those corners, because people start to put out the week before.
I agree, if you're gonna, yeah, if you're gonna-
Like Nancy said, I've, I've already seen things out now.
As long as we have a week, pick a week, and if it, if it's gotten worse, then yeah, then, you know, people will understand, they know.
I've got a neighbor with five refrigerators on.
There you go.
So it's, it's happening.
You hear that?
Yeah, I've seen them today. There was one yesterday, and five today.
So does anybody else want to give it a shot?
I will make the motion that we have cleanup week, the week of May 18th.
Okay, we have a motion by Wolf, second. Second by Stern.
The only thing I would like to say is, probably the only thing the guys off the shop were gonna say is, we're gonna be handling furniture, and I think that's everybody's biggest concern, bear hug in somebody's mattress and an old couch, it'd be nice if we could find some better quality, actually, some N95 masks, and we could wear it regularly.
I agree.
We will-
I mean, just, just for that precaution.
Absolutely.
If you want to wear it, fine, but some of that's, you know, the garbage bags and the iron, we're not worried about. The concern that they brought to me was bear hugging some of these chairs and furniture that you can't grab with the clam bucket or whatever, you're getting pretty close in person with somebody's old mattress. with the clam bucket or whatever, you're getting pretty close in personal with, uh, somebody's old mattress, you just don't know.
Yeah.
What kind of quantity would we need, Dave?
I suppose everybody would need a fresh one every day, and we, we have the whole crew outs, I mean, every truck is always out, but-
Probably around fifty, I guess.
I know that, uh, we are getting, we are getting masks out at DVC, and the direction is going to be that you'll, you'll have a personal issued one and if you, you, we use it for multiple days.
Are they usable for more than one day? I mean, as long as you don't destroy them, I mean, if they're good, that's fine, we want to use it every day.
My sister is in, in the healthcare industry in the city, and they get a personal issue, uh, one a week. And they, they have a, a brown bag that they, in between uses, they put it in their own little brown bag, and they use it for a whole week.
Okay.
You know, and gloves, do we have enough gloves, you know, for our guys, do we, do we issue gloves or is that-
Yeah, Matt has a pretty good selection of gloves and stuff that we go through.
Okay.
And we even have some paper coveralls that we could actually lose everything, the rest of the furniture could put out on every disposable.
Okay.
Neatly, we could get a couple more pair of those.
Any more discussion? Uh, roll call.
Wolf.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Pat.
Hi.
Heller.
Hi.
Owen Hour.
All right, motion carried, thank you. Uh, anything else for Water Sewer, that's, okay, moving on to Streets Cemetery.
Uh, don't have much to report, we got all the, uh, current up, I talked to Dave this afternoon, uh, remember they started sweeping today, but with the wind, it kind of put it off for a day. Uh, so they moved to, uh, work and start to work on alleys, Brumman Alley back up at product alleys. And I just mentioned to Dave, there's areas, for example, the one, the alley by Pioneer Apartments, we're going to have to add extra product because we've got a bunch sitting out there. Uh, so that's kind of the direction where again, well, it's hidden, uh, but it sounds like if the wind goes down, they're going to be sweeping, so between that and Brumman Alley, uh, Dave, did I miss anything?
No, wind left down or whatever, we got alleys done, which, they've got a good jump on it today, we're going to start on the, the banners, getting them back up on Main Street. We'll need fairly long day for that, if things look in the winter, we'll talk to Russell on the wind, but-
Okay, any questions for Jason? All right, Finance, Busting, Library. Police, Fire, Forestry.
Nothing at this time.
HCD.
Nothing here, Gary.
Okay, thanks Buster. Um, and I was just going to talk about the Water Tower property, I did talk to the landowners and they are um, interested in letting us do, use or sell some of the land up there, um, in that location, that Monty has the, the map up on the, on the board. Um, so I'll have Monty start talking to them further. Um, that takes us down to twelve A, propane bids.
It's basically just an FYI, that'll be published in paper and sent to the usual bidders.
All right, and twelve B, twenty twenty-one bus grant authorization resolutions.
Basically, we're looking at two separate grants, the fifty-three eleven is our normal operating and administrative grant, uh, will be in the area little over two hundred thousand dollars will be the request for that. And we're also going to submit a fifty-three thirty-nine grant for a new van, ours is a beyond its useful life. So that'll be just slightly more than forty thousand, and still working on the narratives, but if you can approve the authorizing resolution that just authorizes me to submit those grants and then answer any questions that the state may have.
Move to approve the, uh, the, uh, resolutions. Okay, motion by Stern.
Second.
Second by Wolf, discussion. Roll call.
Stern.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Pat. Heller.
Hi.
Owen Hour.
Hi, motion carried. Okay, approval bills.
Hopefully you got the additions that were entered today.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf to approve, second, second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Pat.
Hi.
Heller.
Hi.
Owen Hour.
All right, motion carried, media adjourned, thank you all.